We did not have anyone sign up for invocations, so we will begin with a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. And now the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will move on to agenda item three additions and deletions. Alderman Cooper.
Madam Mayor, I want to make somewhat of an addition. Item seven C?
Yes.
Needs to have a public hearing. I'm sorry, item seven B. Item seven B, BOA 2022-0020, special use permit, want to add a public hearing for that. Change that to item seven A. And then we'll do business to number eight.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Alderman Cooper?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I want to make a motion to approve the agenda with the corrections.
May I pause there?
I second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved, we'll move on to item five, approval of consent items, the draft minutes for the June 13th work session. Alderman Placios.
So moved.
Sir second? Alderman Cooper?
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and the consent items have been approved, we are now moving on to public comments, and we will start with Ms. Wannina Barnes. Please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor, Board, visitors and residents of Spring Lake. My name is Wannina Barnes, I live at 1423 Milton Street. In January 2022, my water bill had not been read for 35 days, March 41 days because employees were out sick. I understand there is a proposal to increase our water and sewer bill. Spring Lake will receive 3.51 hundred million dollars from the American Rescue Plan. What is this money being designated for? Why can't money from this plan be used to offset the increase for our water bills? Will residents have an input in how we would like it to be spent? And we need to invest in our water and sewer infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Barnes. All right, we will move on to Ms. Janet Brower.
Think that's for the public.
Okay. All right, we will move on to agenda item seven, our public hearing. For BOA 220020, special use permit, Mr. Frank Hall, Senior Planner, Cumberland County Planning. Oh, not Frank.
Good evening, I'm David Ruh, and I'm the Deputy Director of Planning Inspections for Cumberland County. With me this evening is Chris Portman, he's planner in our department. He took the lead in preparing the staff report and conducting research for the case before you on the special use permit for the Sand Hills Heritage Association. Frank Hall started with our department approximately five days ago, and he will be serving as the Spring Lake Town Planner. So I'm giving the introduction of this evening. There was some discussion earlier about whether we need to swear in those who speak tonight. This is a quasi initial proceeding. I'll leave it up to you and your typical proceedings as to whether you decide if the staff here and the audience needs to swear in, whether you want to do it all at once or individually.
Do we have legal online? Is that Jose?
Yes, Mary, we do.
Can we get that?
Mr. Jose Koker.
Can we get their input on that, please? Jose?
He's muted.
Can you hear him?
No, he's not muted because it's there. He's not muted.
We can't hear you, Jose.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay. I'm sorry, I was having a hard time hearing you all, so can you re-ask the question?
We had to open a public hearing for the Greater Sand Hills, excuse me, public hearing, or approval for...
The special use permit?
Yeah, the special use permit. So, do we need to swear in the people here to present and the audience here to speak for against?
Yes, this is will be, that's correct, this will be an evidentiary proceeding, so everybody that is signed up to speak, I guess you can swear them all in at one time, and then everybody can take their turns and present why they, why they think the permit should be allowed or denied. And then, as you know, Madam Mayor, the Board will then make its decision, and it would have to make its decision based on the requirements for the findings of fact laid out in the, in the package or the application for or against this special use permit, but there has to be special, specific findings of fact for or against.
So we can go ahead and swear everyone in now before we begin?
I would do it all at once.
Okay, so if there's anyone here to speak for against this case, could you please come and we'll get you all sworn in at once?
I state your name.
I am John.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support.
And I will support.
And maintain.
And maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the State, of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina? I'm sorry.
I think that's because someone was taking office.
That's why I'm reading this, I'm like, this doesn't sound right.
Well, that's it, I love it.
Where's the rest of it? This isn't the right.
I'm reading this like, this is... Sorry. Affirm. Tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help me God, so thank you very much.
Again, David Ruh, Deputy Director of Planning Inspections for Cumberland County, here to help Chris Portman with the presentation, and lead you with the general instructions of the proceedings for this evening. If you go to the next slide. Case revealed tonight is a special use permit, the application for that permit. The Board of Aldermen, through your zoning code and town codes, has the authority to take final action on the special use request. Does not require to appear this application before the Joint Planning Board, the application after review by the county staff, basically your consultants, it comes directly to the Board of Aldermen. A special use permit may be issued to authorize development or land uses in a particular zoning district upon presentation of competent material and substantial evidence establishing compliance in one or more general standards, requiring that judgment discretion be exercised as well as compliance with specific standards. Ultimately, the burden of proof is on the applicant determined that the special use application is consistent with the town's codes. This is a quasi initial proceeding, it is based on the findings of facts that are presented to you this evening as well as what has been presented in the staff report. That is part of your agenda package. Now, part of the town's code requirements with a special use application is a special use site plan. That site plan is part of a list of conditions associated with the requested uses. As part of your action this evening, if you approve the special use, you will make reference to that site plan as well as those conditions. As set forth in the town's codes, you as Alderman may stipulate conditions and restrictions. However, they must be reasonable and appropriate so long as the applicant for the special use has agreed to those terms and conditions. The terms and conditions that appear in the staff report have been accepted by the applicant in our discussions with them and via email. However, this afternoon, there were telephone conference calls with the applicant, and there were some additional conditions that they would like the Board of Aldermen to consider when you take action this evening. Those additional conditions will be presented by Mr. Portman when he gives his presentation. So there are two special use requests this evening, move on to the next slide. And your action was based on those four criteria. Those four criteria are the use will not materially endanger, the public health or safety of located according to the plan submitted and recommended. The use meets all required conditions and specifications. The use will maintain or enhance the value of adjoining or abutting properties, or that the use is a public necessity. And then the fourth is the location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan, that's referred to the site plan in your package, and that will be presented this evening. As submitted and recommended, will be in harmony with the area in which it is intended to be located and is in general conformity with the town's adopted comprehensive plan. Staff has reviewed that site plan and determined that it meets the intent of your codes for consistency as a special use site plan. I emphasize special use site plan. This plan does not allow the applicant to proceed with development. The next step is a development site plan, which will be submitted if approved tonight, the special use, which likely will reappear before this, this board. That will provide a little more detail, but look very similar to the special use site plan. So that completes my portion of the presentation. Chris Portman now will run through the details of the application and go through the additional conditions that were discussed today. Unless you have any other questions, Chris will take over from here.
Thank you, sir. One moment, we did have a question.
Sir?
Alderman Lackman.
From what I'm understanding here, shouldn't this run through the Board of Adjustments before the Board of Aldermen?
No, sir, your code sends a special use permit straight to the Board of Aldermen. We checked your procedures and it doesn't have it going through the Board of Adjustment. Typically, the Board of Adjustments has authority to make final actions, and in this case, it doesn't serve as an advisory board for special use, it comes directly to this board.
Mr. Koker, could you weigh in on it for me, please?
I'm sorry, can you say that one more time?
This case here, the way, the way I look at it, should run before the Board of Adjustments instead of the Board of Aldermen. I've got clarification here that that is not the case. Can you weigh in on that for me, please?
I've heard the gentleman say that the process is to go to the Board of Aldermen. I guess I would ask, what, why do you believe that it does not go through that, that process?
After review of the town's code, it specifically says that it, that it goes to the Board of Aldermen. I don't have a hard copy of the code in front of us, but we specifically reviewed the procedures.
And that's where I'm trying to wrap my head around this, so that we are doing it correctly, so that in the future, we don't have everybody else go to the Board of Adjustments, and this one come before the Board of Aldermen.
It could be my understanding, and I'm just looking at section 42-361.3, special use permits, consideration of application, the Board of Aldermen must establish a finding of fact. So it says the Board of Aldermen must establish certain facts to approve the special use, and there are four factors that they must consider. And, and so, based on my review of that, it appears that it would be the Board of Aldermen that would be making that decision. And that's me relying on what, what is in front of me with respect to section 42-361.3.
Thank you.
Hi, Chris.
Hello, my name is Chris Portman, I am a planner for the Cumberland County Planning Inspection Department. For case BOA 2022-0020, the applicant owner is the Sand Hills Family Heritage Association. The agents were Josh Prumpler and Lori Jackson. They're requesting a special use permit on 1.87 acres off of Chapel Hill. So the property owner, Sand Hills Family Heritage Association, requests the BOA to grant two special use permits, one for nonprofit activities, historic exhibit, a kitchen, nonprofit office space, and a community center. The use matrix shown in Exhibit E in the staff report indicates that the proposed use is similar to an assembly use, which requires a special use permit for the C1 zoning district. The second use will be for an open air farmer's market, which also requires a special use permit. Section 42-91 of the Spring Lake Zoning Ordinance, provided Exhibit E, Exhibit C, sorry, addresses the standards that a farmer's market must meet. Before you is the submitted site plan by the applicant. It illustrates 33 parking spaces, a proposed landscaping plan, as well as the existing structures. The arrow pointing is an existing 1,100 square foot open air farmer's display for the farmer's market. In the red hatched part, that is the site, it is within, welcome to the next slide. The surrounding uses is wooded behind it, the Williams Chapel Freewill Baptist Church is to the left of it, as well as some single family residential on adjacent sides. This is a zoomed in portion of the property, you can see the existing structures, as well as wooded property to the left of it, or if you're looking towards the property from the road on the right, as well as wooded areas surrounding the property. This is a more zoomed out portion to kind of get a better feel of the surrounding area. It shows the church to the side, North Rag Boulevard to the left, Chapel Hill, neighborhood off to the right, just some wooden areas surrounding this property. Some of the surrounding zonings are R6 residential, C3, CP, as well as commercial. This property is C1, which is the local business district. Water and sewer is both provided in front of the property, no hydrant or hydrant inclusion soils are present. This is the subject property looking from the road, and this is the building that's going to be used for the historic exhibit and everything else like that, and then to the right of that, you can see the open air farmer's market. Just another picture of it beside the building and more heads on approach of the structures. This is the east view looking down Chapel Hill, this is across the street. This is across the street, the north view of looking, if you're standing in on the property, it's looking across towards the residential home. This is looking west with the subject property to the right of it. These are the applicant requested conditions that were submitted today via email that need to have action made. The first one is from section 42-261 and 42-227B5, gravel parking. Gravel is allowed as a parking lot material with the ADA accessible parking and sidewalk being a concrete and or paved surface. The gravel parking spaces will be decriminated by wheel stops. Any dry oil constructed material must be approved by the fire marshal. The second one, the second condition, is section 42-228 for the buffer screening. In lieu of the wood stockade fence abutting residential development to the east and west, existing trees shall be preserved within a 25 foot wide buffer along the eastern and western property line. See, section 42-91.e.1 for vendors. Vendors of the farmer's market shall only be from Cumberland County or Hardin County protocol because it says they have to be within a radius or surrounding area for vendors. The final condition is from section 42-91.e.8, open air farmer's market. Farmer's market shall only operate on Saturdays and Sundays during daylight hours. The special use criteria is pursuant to section 42-361-4.3. Special use permits, consideration of application, the Board of Aldermen must establish a finding of fact for the following criteria. One, the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety of located according to the plan submitted and recommended. Two, the use meets all required conditions and specifications. Three, the use will maintain or enhance the value of adjoining or abutting properties, or that the use is a public necessity. And finally, four, the location and character of the use is, if developed according to the plan submitted and recommended, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and in general conformity with the town's adopted comprehensive plan.
As this is a quasi judicial proceeding, just for the record, the staff report will serve as Exhibit A. The handout that you received with the communication today with the applicant will serve as Exhibit B.
That is all I have, but the applicants are here, and as well as their engineer to speak on the back.
Thank you, Chris, hang on, do we have any questions from the Board of Aldermen? Alderwoman Cooper?
Yes, thank you. So is this part of the...
Sorry, can you get back to the mic so they can hear you on Zoom?
So this information was here when we got here, and I think it was on the screen. Is this part of what we should also consider?
That's just a printed out version of the PowerPoint, in case something was to happen or we still lose the PowerPoint slide or lose connection here, you all just have a hard copy of the actual slide presentation. It was just for your information, I don't think it's considered as an exhibit.
Sorry, it's already in the record of the meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you. Are there any other questions from the Board? Alderman Placios?
I do have a question about the special use criteria B, the use meets all required conditions and specifications. How do we determine this B? The conditions, the applicant requested conditions, the four different conditions that they're asking for, how do we determine? Can you answer that question?
Part of your staff report, you'll find a written response by the applicant that is presented in Exhibit I at the end. You have the information presented from you in the staff report as well as the special use site plan. Those are prepared and presented to demonstrate consistency with the town's codes. Then, to further demonstrate consistency, there is Exhibit H, which is, will actually, if approved by the Aldermen, become a special use permit. And those conditions assure compliance with your zoning codes as well as any additional conditions that you may establish this evening. For example, as Mr. Portman referenced earlier, for a farmer's market, there's a special section in your code that has general criteria as to how a farmer's market can be conducted. One of those is hours of operation. The applicant has requested that they be able to operate on Saturdays and Sundays from dawn to dusk. You can accept that, you could establish something more detailed, like from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. That's to demonstrate consistency with criteria. So that is my response to your, your question. You've got the presentations tonight, the staff report, and then where a specific use, as is the farmer's market, you can establish special standards and criteria as you deem appropriate, so long as they're also acceptable to the applicant.
Thank you.
Alderman Lackman?
Typically, the ADA parking spots are done in concrete or asphalt. Here I see that is specifically being asked for gravel instead. So I know those that with disabilities will make it extremely... So, I know those, that with disabilities will make it extremely difficult for the maneuvering around there. What is the general nature of the gravel versus paved parking?
Well, my suggestion, staff has completed his presentation. Now, the board would want to entertain evidence and testimony from the applicant, and then open up the public hearing for any affected parties that may want to speak. And then you have opportunities for rebuttal or additional questions.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board? Okay, I now declare this public hearing open for... BOA two-zero-two-two zero-zero-two-zero special use permit. And I ask if there's anyone here to speak in support of this to come forward now.
I'm Josh Crumpler.
Could you state your name and address for the record?
Josh Crumpler, two-three-oh-eight Ridge Road, Raleigh, North Carolina. I'm here, I'm the engineer of record for the site, and will be happy to answer any questions regarding the ADA parking. The ADA parking would be the only paved parking with the sidewalks leading into the building. The remaining portions of the parking lot would be gravel, and the parking spaces would be denoted using wheel stops. So, it's the opposite, I think it was the opposite of maybe of what you were asking.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question about the open-air chapel that's there. There will be no changes made to that, correct?
That's correct. The applicants here as well, too, they may have a little more, if you have more questions specific regarding the uses, I'm happy to help with any questions on the actual site plan, so.
Any questions from the board? No questions? No questions for you, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak and support this request?
Good evening. My name is Janet Brower. I am Board Chair of Saint Hills Family Heritage Association. My address is one-one-eight Brower Road, Cameron, North Carolina. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to speak in support of approval of this special use permit. Note, Saint Hills has operated this farmer's market for fifteen years. It was the first one established in Cumberland County, is the understanding that I have. And it, or we have tried very hard to be great neighbors and to operate this market in harmony with the site and with the community. You have, we are asking that we do be allowed to have paved parking, again, because we are very conscious of the environment and the nature of what we do would be perfect to maintain the site as naturally as possible. We do have wooded areas on the east, west, and I guess south side of the market, and we would not want to change that with wooden fences. And we have a nature, native plant trail that is a part of one of the sides, one of the wooded areas. So, we are asking that that not be changed, that we are allowed to keep that. And again, the paved parking would just be for the areas for handicapped. We are conscientious of people who visit the market and who are supporters there as well.
Any questions from the board?
And I do have other board members. If I've left, omitted anything, you have our...
Absolutely. They are both welcome to come and speak.
Priscilla Burton is our treasurer, and Ms. Clyde is our secretary.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Please go.
Hi. My name is Priscilla Burton, and I'm the treasurer for Saint Hills Family Heritage Association. Have been for several years now, and it has been my pleasure to see our organization continue to grow and become more influential in the community and of greater help to members of the community, and I think we can continue to do that with your approval of what it is that we're requesting here to submit. As Janet said, we've been in operation with the market for about fifteen years, but the organization has been in existence for, going on twenty-one years. We have some dynamic partners, as you can see, Mr. Crumpler is from Raleigh, but there are a lot of other people that we've worked with to ensure that the services that we are providing and the plans that we have are consistent with maintaining a historical approach based on what it is that happened at that site and what it is that we would like to see archived based on that history, as well as the current history going forward. It would be a wonderful place, not just for this community, but we also have heritage tourism. We've been on NPR, and we've, you know, we've collaborated with people in Canada on a book, and people are being taught about things that we do. So, we want to, we want to have a home, and that building and that site is our home. We want to continue to be good stewards and move us forward into the future, hanging on to our past, looking back at our past, as our San Costa bird says, but moving forward. And we thank you for listening to our presentation.
One additional bit of information. We recently, I guess December, received two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from the State of North Carolina, from the General Assembly, to restore the building so that it would be, will be used, it will be a community hub. And so, we certainly want you to know that and know how important this project is for us, and certainly that could not have happened without Representative Lucas's help. So, we applaud him, and we're very grateful to him for this. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I didn't plan to speak, so if I may have a moment. The property at two-thirty Chapel Hill Road has been, since the nineteen-forties, a place of civic and community activity. The site plan came about because of the work that has to be done to preserve the building, bring the building up to code, and as Ms. Priscilla said, continue the mission going forward. We're really, in my mind, we're here on a technicality because it's what we have to do. We, nothing's really changing. Everything that you've seen for the past fifteen years is going to be the same.
Could you give the board your name?
Oh, I do apologize. My name is Deborah Clyde. I live at one-ten Marvin Tribe, Spring Lake, North Carolina.
Well, I want to commend you guys on the work that you have been doing for the past twenty years, and congratulating you on moving forward with preserving such a community monument that deserves to be honored. Quick question, that native plant trail, that was also a slave trail as well down to the market house, am I correct?
That's the, that's the plant road, the church before that. They have a plant road replica there on site. We have a brush over on site and the native plant trail. The native plant trail has to do more so with our health-wise program and understanding the medicinal uses that people use some of those plants for. But the plant road definitely was a thoroughfare from Fayetteville to Winstonville, and we have a replica of that.
Okay, congratulations on moving forward. Hopefully, with the board's approval, we'll be seeing, you know, some additions and renovations to our farmer's market. And I did not know that this was the first in Cumberland County, so that's huge. That's monumental to have a first like that right here at home in our backyard.
And we've also been commended by the Cumberland County Department of Health because of our workshops that we provide through our health-wise program that has helped to lower the chronic health disparities for African-Americans in Cumberland County.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in support of this request? Is there anyone else to speak in support of this request? Last call, if there is anyone here to speak in support of this request? If there is no one, I would like to ask for anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this request. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? If there is anyone here to speak in opposition of this request? If there is no one left to speak, I would like to entertain questions from the board?
I don't have a question, but I just want to say that growing up, I'm fifty-one, I'll be fifty-one this year, and my family, we used to have our family reunions there when I was young, growing up, so I'm glad that you all are bringing life back in preserving the building. Thank you. Better person?
I just want to say thank you as well, because I grew up having parties in that building, so it's going to be amazing for other children in the community to be able to go and see all the historical value that you guys are bringing back, so thank you so much.
Alderman Cooper?
I just want to say thank you as well. I probably have to head, went to some of those events at Adrian's family, and she probably came to some of ours because we all grew up together, so it'll be glad, it'll be nice to have something going on in there and just have those memories again, so thank you.
Alden Plasios?
Yeah, ditto, my fellow board members. I, I think it would do good for all of Spring Lake and the surrounding areas to learn more about what you guys offer, as well as, just wanted to confirm, to learn more information, your website is sandhillsfamilyheritage.org, is that accurate? Sandhillsfamilyheritage.org. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no more comments, I declare this public hearing closed, and I'll entertain a motion from our board.
Madam Mayor, if I can. As recommended by council, the motion to, if there's a motion to approve or a motion to deny, must be able to, be able to grant, to be able to say that it meets those special use criteria.
That's correct.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kokai, probably.
No, you did an excellent job.
And if you could include the four additional conditions that the applicant presented this evening, they are on one of the sides, unless you have any concern with those conditions. If you can incorporate that in your motion as well.
Alderman Cooper?
Thank you, ma'am. I'd like to make a motion that we approve BOA twenty-twenty-two dash oh-oh-two-zero. I believe that the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located according to the plan submitted and recommended. The use meets all required conditions and specifications. The use will maintain or enhance the value of adjoining or abutting properties, or that the use is a public necessity, and the location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan submitted and recommended, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and is in general conformity with the town's adopted comprehensive plan. Including, also including the provisions stated in the email dated June twenty-seventh, which are, the special use permit only applies to two issues, the current farmer's market structure and activities, and the assembly activities to be conducted on the site, the...
You could refer to that slide, if we could switch over to that slide before the mission, so you could just address that.
Okay. Okay, and also gravel parking, section forty-two dash two-six-one, forty-two dash two-two-seven B5, gravel is allowed as parking lot material with the ADA accessible parking and sidewalk being a concrete and/or paved surface. The gravel parking spaces will be demarcated by wheel stops. Any drive-by or construction material must be approved by the fire marshal. B, buffer screen, section forty-two dash two-two-eight, in lieu of a wood stockade fence abutting residential development to the east and west, existing trees shall be preserved within a twenty-five-foot-wide buffer along the eastern and western property line. And C, vendors, section forty-two dot ninety-one E1, vendors at the farmer's market shall only be from Cumberland County or Hardin County, and it says C, but I believe it should be D. Open-air farmer's market, section forty-two dot ninety-one E8, farmer's market shall operate only on Saturdays and Sundays during daylight hours.
Is there a second?
I said it.
Is there any discussion? All in face. Any opposed? Congratulations to Saint Hills Heritage Association. We look forward to these renovations. This is going to be a great addition to the town's Spring Lake. Thank you to the Cumberland County staff, we appreciate you so much. And we will now...
Welcome aboard to our newest level.
Yes. All right, we will move on to Agenda Item Eight, new business. And we will begin with endorsement of the town's Spring Lake budget ordinance fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three. The public hearing was held and closed on June thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two, at seven PM, and this will be by the local government commission via Mr. Durham.
Thank you very much. You've been provided a copy of the proposed budget ordinance for Spring Lake, and this is for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. And this is the actual ordinance that is adopting all of the other information that's been provided previously, and information that you'll also get in the next few days. Just as a quick summary, this proposed budget does include in the water and sewer utility rates a fourteen percent increase, and the water rates a five percent increase in sewer, and this was necessitated, obviously, by PWC with a sixteen percent rate increase there. The proposed budget does not contain staff furloughs, they will be discontinued. It also includes a three percent cost of living adjustment for staff, and that is included in this budget. And this budget does decrease the town's tax rate from seventy cents to sixty-five cents based upon the town's inclusion into the Cumberland County Parks and Recreation District, which will necessitate a five cents tax increase, so those two negate one another. And the proposed ordinance, and just want to say, the, there is a service, excuse me, support service payments are included in some of those departments, and that is an attempt to capture the allocation of government of general services that are being used by the other funds. It is a, if I can say this, a typical way of, with budget ordinance, is typically, it is not done, but I, your focus should be on that, on the non-departmental, excuse me, on the amount of the funds that are budgeted in each one of those departments, and less so on what those are. That would eliminate some of those inter-fund transfers also. So, that's the intent of capturing that. I'll be glad to respond to any questions that, that are, that, that they come available. Just to... Just advised, this is an endorsement. The Local Government Commission has already adopted the town's budget for twenty-three. And so there's a request that you endorse the proposed budget as requested. Just submit it, excuse me.
Are there any questions from the board? Alderman Plasios.
Where did the notion to have this board endorse the budget that we're not adopting?
It came from the, as you indicated, again, the LGC having assumed management authority for the town's financial affairs. They will do, have done the actual adoption, but also requesting the town of Spring Lake's endorsement and support for the proposed budget. And that's also evidenced by a public hearing that was held a few weeks ago. And the town staff have been actively intimately involved in preparation of the budget. So this is the, the conclusion of that, is having an actual endorsement of that.
All right, thank you. I did want to point my fellow board members to page six, section eleven, which is at the bottom. And you'll see in section eleven, we're levying a tax of sixty-five cents for a hundred dollar valuation of property. And this is conduct, in conjunction with the property value listed as four-hundred-and-sixty-three million dollars. The next line you'll read is, says, "This rate is based on an estimated rate of collection at ninety-eight percent." Okay. Ninety-eight percent, keep that in mind. And turn with me back to page two. Section two at the bottom. Property taxes for real. That amount there is two-point-six-three-five million dollars. Two-point-six-three-five million dollars is not ninety-eight percent collection rate. That number is eighty-eight percent collection rate. A difference of some three-hundred thousand dollars. Now, later this evening, we're going to see the financial report for this fiscal year. And in it, we've collected some three-point-one million dollars already in property taxes. We do have a reduction in property taxes, because we just dropped our property rate from seventy to sixty-five cents. And you'll notice that we are over a hundred percent of what we thought we would receive this year. Which is okay, we are coming on the backs of COVID. So maybe there were people that didn't pay their property taxes the prior year that made up for it. That happens, and that's okay. I can understand that. Then you take away two-hundred-and-thirty-some thousand for the five percent reduction in our tax rate. And I'm still nowhere near the three-hundred thousand dollar difference that's listed in this current budget. Now, three-hundred thousand dollars not being listed is okay. We, again, are at a hundred and one percent of the money that we budgeted for already this year. And now we're dropping that down to, assuming we're going to only collect eighty-eight percent for next year. It's a huge difference, okay? So, three-hundred thousand dollars is a huge difference for this town and our departments and our staff and operations. Three-hundred thousand dollars can go a lot, a long way towards the basic services that this town needs. And personally, I ran on restoring our cash fund. So I love a very conservative estimate when it comes to the budget. I want that extra money to replenish all the years of loss that we, overspending that this town has done. But these numbers don't add up. So I'm okay with saving the rest of the money. But also, and if there was a line item that said there's a certain amount going back towards the general cash fund, which there was discussion of that. I just don't see that here, of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars is what David Irwin last presented to us. But I don't see that anywhere here. And if that's coming from a different area, that's okay. But again, these numbers aren't adding up to ninety-eight percent. There's three-hundred thousand dollars missing. And if that's going for the savings, that's okay. I understand there's likely still going to be more work that needs to be done with this. I, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that there is money here that's not accounted for based on these projections of a collection rate of ninety-eight percent. So, Alderwoman Thompson just mumbled under her breath. Are you not in favor in an endorsement? This budget's already been adopted by the LGC. And, and so this board has no control over what this budget says. But I can endorse in a, a budget that the numbers are, are wrong. And if it was, if it's just that area, then, anyway, that's where I stand.
Thank you, Alderman Plasios. Is there any other discussion? And I agree, I stand with you. When there's, you know, missing money, we can't appropriately, you know, do what our state auditor, you know, told us to do, is making sure we're minding every penny. So although the, the budget is already adopted, it's kind of hard to endorse that. Alderman Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Alderman Plasios, for that insightful information. My issue, and I, again, I know this budget has been, it has been adopted. But my issue with endorsing it is I've not even had thirty minutes, you know, uninterrupted to look it over. I mean, we got it this morning. I don't even remember what time. I actually have a full-time job. I locate the five Monday through Friday. So I, I, I can't say that I'm doing the right thing for the citizens. And, you know, I've been one of the loudest when it comes to being responsible and doing the work. So I can't say I'm going to endorse something that I haven't had a chance to even look over, compare it, or just do anything with it. Thank you.
If, if I can, I've had conversations with, with some of you regarding the proposed budget ordinance as, as it has been developed. Did indicate that there were some technical changes. Obviously, this is, of, this is material, indicating with the amount that we're talking about. And there are, I'll come up with a response from the LGC on, on this matter. And making sure that we do indeed have the appropriate amount budget. There will be some, again, as I indicated previously, some technical changes that will have to be made in addition to some of the ones that have been noted this evening. So there will be some other changes coming. And also copies of the document will be provided later on this week.
Thank you, Mr. Durham. Alderman Cooper.
Thank you. The budget has already passed. I think the responsible thing, you know, we can do the endorsement anytime. I think the responsible thing is to give everyone a chance to actually look at, go over, and have our comments or whatever prepared for the LGC. But I don't, I think the, the endorsement is ceremonial. My suggestion would be that we remove it and just, and do it later, once we can do it responsibly.
Alderman Plasios.
Thank you, Mr. Durham, as well, for addressing those things. I, I do also want to thank the town staff, who has been working on this budget. And of course, you don't always get what you want anyways, right? That's just the, that's just how it goes in local government. But I also want to thank David Irwin and all those responsible for, can, you know, putting this budget together. I, I did reach out to Mr. Irwin. Now, I understand he's busy and he's got other municipalities that he takes care of. I hadn't heard, heard a response yet from him over the last week. But I did address some of these concerns with him as well. Okay.
Is there any other discussion? So are we going to move to endorse this or no? Alderman Cooper.
I make a motion that we table this for future discussion after we've had a chance to thoroughly go over the material.
Alderman Thompson.
I second what Alderman Cooper says. I think we wait before we endorse it.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We will carry on without the endorsement of the proposed budget ordinance. And we will move on to the Local Government Commission Financial Summary Report for May 2022. Mr. Durham.
Thank you. As you, as you can note, Mr. Irwin is not here this evening. I think he's been on vacation this week. And just a quick summary, you've had a chance to review the document that has been provided to you indicating the financial summary report. This is for the month of May of twenty-two. And there is positive revenue over expenditures, one million dollars at this stage. The largest revenue, of course, is property tax, which is three-point-one-eight million, which exceeds the, what was the budgeted amount. And this is great for the, for the town. Water and sewer revenues are eighty-eight-point-six percent of the budget. Stormwater and sanitation funds have positive net revenue appear to be back on track to finish in good shape. And again, commending staff and the LGC. Obviously, we're moving in the right direction, showing good budget discipline, and these financial statements reflect that today. The, don't want to, you know, this is very good news, but we're also operating in, in, in the negative red. So we still have issues involving the general fund. There's a deficit there. As I indicated to you previously, we, there will not be an audit requirement for the twenty-one year, but for the year ending twenty-two, we will have a, an audit, and that will give us a better idea of where we are financially as relates to the, to the deficit. So again, a lot of good, positive news there, but, but also let us know that we're moving in the right direction, but still have a lot of challenges in front of us as it relates to the town's finances. Even though this is Mr. Irwin's report, I'll be glad to respond to any, any questions that you may have and refer those to him.
I do have a question. Our general fund current budget amounts, they have changed every month. In March, they were seven million, eight-hundred-seventy-five thousand, nine-seventy. May was seven million, six-hundred-and-five thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-nine. And I was just curious why our current budgeted amounts change monthly.
Okay. Duly noted.
Alderman Plasios.
Thank you. I sent a email to Mr. Irwin on this as well. And I asked some of the questions I've continued to ask, which are, are bank recons for this fiscal year up to date? The last time we were updated on this, I was told we are up to date on this fiscal year. So I just want to confirm that that's still the case. I also asked, are we currently on positive pay to hinder any fraudulent check activity? Last, I was told, again, no update. When can we anticipate discussing ARPA funds? We haven't gotten there yet. This was a major hurdle, the budget itself, to get over. So I anticipate we'll be able to discuss ARPA funds in this fiscal year. But I, I don't believe we received all of those funds yet anyways. I think we, there is an update on here, which is we've received one-point-nine million so far. Okay. And I asked about the legal expenses on here. The expenditures for that line item, waiting to hear back on that. And then if the fund balance replenishment, which is the second line item on this, the general fund expenditures, if that was being done this month, because inter-fund transfers and expense reimbursements, as noted from Susan McCollin, have already been posted. But I noticed that this expense has not been paid. That's it. Thank you.
I also have another question on, we signed back in December, I believe it was. We signed our fiscal accountability agreement, which has a list of goals for the unit. And we have been slowly chipping away at those goals. But there is one that's cause, that requires us to develop an action plan to eliminate current deficit and restore the fund balance and the general fund to an appropriate level. And I wanted to know where we were on this, because we worked in this fiscal accountability agreement. It says this action plan results should be reviewed by the Board of Alderman on a monthly basis.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Durham to relay? Thank you so much for that update, Mr. Durham. Okay, we will move on to agenda item eight D, our Audit Committee Updates by Alderman Plasios.
Thank you, Mayor. So the Audit Committee met on June ninth. And one of the things, the major things that we wanted to go over was the audit investigation that was conducted by the state auditor, Beth Wood, and go over each finding and what has happened since then. Want to make sure we update the board, but also our citizens and our town staff. So finding number one, segregation of duties have been implemented, including those of check signers, the process for purchase orders, revenue departments, and bank reconciliations. Bank recon, recons are up to date for this fiscal year. LGC is continuing to update the board with monthly financial reports. A hotline number for reporting has been put up around town buildings. The policy handbook has a completion date of January first, 2023. We're also working on an ethics policy for elected officials and staff. We're still working to fully replace contracted staff. Fiscal year 2022 and 23 budget provides for split staffing, fifty percent contracted staff and fifty percent employees. Starting July, also on that note, to employ a qualified and competent financial director. Starting July 2022, we'll begin recruitment process for the town manager position. Can, we are continuing to review software upgrade options for internal controls for the town. A proof of loss insurance claim has been executed for employee dishonesty. What is that amount again, Mr. Durham?
A hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Thank you. And more notably, the charges have been filed against the former finance director slash accounting technician for this missing money. Finding two, system documentation uploaded as shared drive backup will be completed next month, July 2022. The Parks and Rec Department is no longer taking cash. And we are continuing to review software upgrade options to strengthen internal controls. Finding three, all credit cards are now held by the town manager. Credit cards are dispersed only when the proper documentation is already submitted, including its public purpose. Written policy is still being updated and will be completed by the town staff and finance staff. Responsible parties are... and will be completed by the town staff and finance staff. Responsible parties are the town manager and finance staff. Finding four, the town has recovered all money owed as a result of overpaying the monthly cell phone stipend. The cell phone allowance is no longer provided. The town now provides cell phones to certain staff, and this change resulted in a thirty-three thousand dollar savings for the town. Finding five, adequate documentation is being implemented regarding inventory control, including inventory logs and gas card assignment. Surplus inventory is being assessed as well, and the town has already taken measures to surplus vehicles. We are continuing to review the vehicle policy and amendments will be made. Completion of the vehicle inventory is expected August 2022 to be done by the town manager and Public Works Director. Finding six, closed session meeting minutes have been completed and will be reviewed and approved July 2022. Again, I did want to reiterate that the Audit Committee meetings are open to the public. However, this is a meeting that happens after normal town hall hours, and so those wishing to join the meetings, we're asking that you notify the town clerk so we are aware, so we're aware that you are wanting to attend. And you will be required to be here before 5:30, before the doors are locked. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Plasios. Now we will move on to the mayor's report for me. So I've got a lot of good news, and I will start off with commending our fire department. We have currently maintained a ISR, or insurance rating of a number, category two. This is something that is very, very tough to get, but it's even harder to maintain. And under the leadership of Chief Williams, we have been able to maintain that. But the huge part of it is, our new fire station was listed at nine. And again, due to the leadership of Chief Williams, they have now reached a category two as well. So we have two stations with a category two ISO rating, and that is a huge deal when most municipalities are ranked at a nine or, or higher. So we are setting a standard, and I think that definitely deserves a round of applause.
Big deal.
That's a huge deal. That's a huge deal. So I also wanted to let you know that we do have Coffee with the Mayor tomorrow at 9:00 AM right here. No, I'm sorry, not Coffee with the Mayor. There's a chamber meeting featuring Mr. Durham. So this will be a chance for the business community and citizens to come out and have a kind of conversation with our chamber and with our town, interim town manager. I would like to highlight the fact that we just celebrated Juneteenth, and there was a very successful event in Spring Lake, and the citizens were, were really excited and were looking forward to continue that in the upcoming years, as well as bringing other events to the community. No. This past weekend, we also had a very, very successful job fair, career fair, career resource fair with NC Works. They came out for a two-day event where we had several hundred people traffic through our rec center to find jobs. The employers were excited. There was not a list in there that, that didn't have names. We had people leaving out of there, some with four or five interviews. So that's huge. I have spoken to NC Works already, and they're starting to plan for another job fair. So that will not be the first, I mean, will not be the last job fair we have in Spring Lake, and we're looking to bring more of those, as well as other activities to the town. And I believe that is all I have for now. And I will move on to our Board of Alderman reports. We'll start with you, Alderman Lackman.
Nothing, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Thompson?
I have, I have nothing. Oh, I do have one update. So Alderman Lackman will be out of town next month, when we have our annual, well, monthly cleanup. But I will be there in place of family to be the same location at Pizza Hut right up here in Spring Lake, and it will be at zero eight.
Alderman Plasios?
I just wanted to remind everybody, the Appearance Committee does have some vacancies. So if you're interested in serving in that capacity, volunteering an hour of your time once a month, we'd appreciate your help.
Alderman Cooper? Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind everybody and ask you to pass on that we still have our summer meals bus. It is, it stops at the library from 11:00 to 11:45. Monday through Thursday, there are no meals on Sat, Friday. And then it goes to our fire, our second fire station from 12:00 to 12:45. And they have music. I've heard that our fire chief actually dances for the children. And, thank you, chief. And they have free books. So, and every now and then, I'll be putting together little packages for the chief to give to the children when they get on the bus. So make sure you come out and support that. Tell anyone who has children, the meals are free. They must eat them on the bus. Thank you.
I, I do have a few more. I found my notes. So I wanted to make sure you all knew that Lillian Black is officially closed, and this just happened on June 20th. And then July 5th, there is a Coffee with the Mayor. We'll be discussing cleaning the town, and then also offering the community a chance to ask any questions they would like to ask. And then I do want to acknowledge the fact that the Supreme Court has overturned Roe v. Wade. So as of right now, abortion is still legal in the state of North Carolina, but that could change. So stay connected to your state government, and of course, we'll make sure we keep you updated from here. The splash pad is now open, and I think that's about it that I wanted to talk about. Now, I will now, that's to you, Mr. Durham.
I have no report.
One more. We have new hours. We have new town hours. We are now open Monday through Friday, eight to five.
July 5th.
July 5th. So as of July 5th, we will begin operating in our new business hours. Do we have any updates from our attorney? Say, do you have anything?
Nothing at this time.
Well, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn. My board didn't light up like. Okay, Mayor, bro too. Is there a second? Alderman Thompson?
I second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?